This may is a call to order at six thirty on February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. And Mike, would you do the pledge, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Jimmy, will you do the prayer, please? Jimmy, can you hear me?
I could see him earlier, but um. He may be having some issues.
Yeah, I can see his name, but can't see anything.
I can't see his name.
Yeah. I see his name down. I don't know how it is on yours, but on the kind of on the bottom, the row, what bottom row up. Okay, does anybody want to do the prayer? Since Jimmy can't hear. Hey, Jeff?
Yes.
You want to do the prayer? You do good.
I can do, I can do the prayer.
Okay, thank you.
Father, we come before you tonight here in this town council meeting, and we ask that you would be with us as uh we discuss the town's business, and we'd make good decisions uh that were right for the town and the people with us. We also pray tonight for uh all the people in Ukraine as uh they battle an intrusion that we know nothing about, and we pray that our leaders of our country will make good decisions and 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 make the right choices uh with what's going on in Ukraine. Uh most importantly, though, Father, we give you thanks, and you pray will you be with us. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. Okay, Sandy, you ready for the road call?
Um, I've got a request here to um invite Ronnie Van Devender. He wants to join the meeting. See if I can do that real quick.
Okay.
Well. It is not coming easy, of course. I will come back to that. Pamela Samples?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Scott Oldham? Trevor Sager?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second it. Okay, whenever you're ready, Sandy.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham? Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Uh, abstain, I wasn't frozen.
Pam Samples?
I abstain, I wasn't here either.
Well. We have to have three votes to, oh, there's Scott. Scott, we're voting on the minutes um which I sent out earlier, and I need your vote to accept or deny.
Accept. Sorry, Samuel, those guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have action to pay, counts payable vouchers and payroll. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Sandy, whenever you're ready.
William Ellis?
Okay, yes, sorry.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next we have the Board of the zoning appeals. It's pointed by council presidents to reappoint Fred Ball, term ended twenty twenty-five. So am I the only one that needs to do anything then? You, is Kevin on here?
I am.
Do you have anything to say about it, the BCA? I mean?
Uh, no, Fred's been on the BCA for years, and his term ran out, and he's asked to be reappointed.
Okay. Okay, then I appoint Fred Ball as the boning on the voting is zoning appeals board, determining twenty twenty-five. Okay. Next, we have the public hearing, proposed increase in sewer connection and tap charges, a sewer hook on fee. So Mike, is this you?
Sure, it can be me. Um, we have um a proposal to increase the sewer connections. Currently, they're fifteen hundred dollars per connection. It's a capital replacement fund it goes into, and it ensures that we have monies to update, upgrade, or replace um the sewer plant, uh wastewater plant um sometime in the future. Uh, we were, we did a great study probably in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, something like that. At that time, it was suggested that we increase um the amount, I think twenty-five hundred dollars is what we want uh it to increase to, and it's comparable to surrounding communities, if not still um quite a bit lower.
Okay.
Uh, the other one is the tap charges. Uh, no, okay, that's just for the sewer, right?
It says for.
Yeah, yeah.
For a hook on fee.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, so what? Then, okay, so what do we do? Do we vote for this, or is the public hearing already out, or we're going to put it out?
Um, you should ask if there is anyone from the public who wants to comment on it, Pam, and let them comment on it now.
Okay, so do we have anybody that wants to public on the increase in sewer connection and tap charges? Okay, I see none.
Madam President, if you don't mind, um, I'd like to ask Mike or Kevin, have you guys heard any feedback from this from any developers or anyone building a house here um complaining about this fee?
Uh, well, no, they, I've had a couple of people make note of it, and actually, a couple of people that had houses underway went ahead and paid their hook on fees prior to this, but other than that, I haven't had a lot of comments or conversations about it.
Kevin, have you heard anything?
Uh, no one's mentioned anything to me about it, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's no one out there building a house right now and, you know, needs a hook on fee next month or something, and wasn't aware of it, but even though we have advertised it, it's, you know, sometimes it doesn't get out there, but um with all the building going on in Elsville, I'm just a little concerned, but, you know, they've had plenty of time, I guess.
Hey, any other council member have anything they want to ask or say? Okay, so Darla, do we vote on this now, or?
Uh, you'll, you'll vote on it here in a minute or so, under ordinances on second reading.
Okay.
Order twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two dash O two is the subject of the um public hearing notice.
Okay. All right, so next on the genus are quotes for the CT five-five-five-zero compact tractor with front-end loader and a rotary mower, Trailblazer TB MZC. So who wants that? Mike, want that one?
I think that's Kip.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take it. Mike, Mike knows all about it, so. What it is, is we've got a, a John Deere nine fifty tractor. It's a nineteen eighty-eight model. It's thirty-four years old. It's done well and served its purpose. It's been well taken care of. Uh, we were wanting to trade this tractor in on a newer tractor. Uh, we've got three quotes for a Bobcat tractor. It's about comparison and horsepower. It's maybe a little bit bigger tractor, uh along with upgrading to this tractor. It's a more versatile tractor. We'll be able to do more uh versatile things for the town. Uh, it's kind of a two-packaged deal if you want to vote on them both together. Uh, the mower that we're wanting to get it, I don't know if you noticed it in your packet or not, but the mower will attach to the front-end loader of the tractor, and it will be able to mow flat alongside the edge of the road, or we can turn it up on side, and the limbs that are growing over into the road, we can trim them limbs off. With that said, with the annexations we've been doing uh around the edge of the town limits, we're acquiring road frontages of the county, and so therefore now it's our responsibility to mow them edges of the road and all that. Uh, we got roughly five miles of road now that's, that's within the town limits, on the outer edge of the town limits. So you take that times two for the, for the lane miles, it's roughly probably up to ten mile, eleven miles of road that we need to keep uh maintained, and uh me and Jay uh we conferred with Jeff Farmer on this, and Sandy has uh also put a letter in the packet that we have the funds in the MVH Sewer and Water uh to bill pay for this. We'll be able, we'll also be able to trim the roadway going into the sewer plant and do other functions with it as well with the sewer and water. So uh I don't know how you want to do this, if you want to do this. Uh, the uh Elsville, uh Bobcat of Elsville was low on the quote. Out of three quotes that we got, uh the, the wa, or the uh, the, the mower, uh the Trailblazer mower, uh the low bid was uh, uh out of Mooresville. Uh, I can't remember the name right offhand, but they were low, low quote on that. I'd say bid, low quote. So we come before you to, to bill purchase these two items, and then we will be trading in the eighty-eight at Elsville Bobcat. They're going to take it in as trade-in.
Okay, does the public have any questions? Council, you have any questions?
Just, just so we're clear uh for the public, Kip, it looks like in the packet, thirty-six thousand four hundred, that includes both, right?
Uh, the, the, I'm sorry, I didn't do my homework.
No, you're good. I just, I want to make sure we're being clear on funds on that.
Uh. The, the tractor itself is thirty-six thousand three hundred nineteen. That's the low bid from uh Bobcat of Elsville, and that includes a four thousand dollar trade-in, and then on top of that will be another additional uh six thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents. That's why I'm saying if, I don't know if you want to do this separately or together, and that's from mower zone in Daniel, Indiana, for the mower and all the uh items that goes with the mower to build it to hook it up to the tractor.
Okay. Darla, do you prefer if we do it separate, or how are you wanting it done?
I think under the circumstances, it's all right to do one vote for the compact tractor for thirty-six thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-si, seventy-two cents, and for the mower for six thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars with the trade-in. I think one motion can cover both of them. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so anybody else? Hey, do I have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. I'll second.
I'll make a motion to approve the quotes, uh dollar figures uh specified by Ms. Darla Brown for the CT uh five-five-five-zero compact tractor with front-end loader and a rotary mower, the Trailblazer TB MZC.
I'll second.
Okay. Sandy, whenever you're ready.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes. Okay, next we have no ordinances on the first reading.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And then we have ordinances on the second reading. The first orders we have is twenty twenty-two dash zero-one to amend section thirty-six point two for the Elsfield Town Code to clarify pay time off payout eligibility. Is this you, Sandy?
Well, this is just a small change to the code. I, I think Mike Cornman um explained it at the last meeting, so I think I'll let him do that again.
Okay.
Well, thank you. This is part of the town personnel policy that allows a payout for somebody separating employment after uh ten continuous years. The previous uh verbiage was uh ambiguous as to what it meant with the town's uh retirement policy. Uh, the intent was with the town's personnel, I'm sorry, the perf, which was the town's retirement policy, was ten years. And there was some ambiguity now with the definitions with perf, so we want to take that out and make it uh just ten years. That was the intent we come up with a long time ago, so uh it was ten years. That's the only change we want to make, so.
Okay, does public have any questions? Okay, how about council? Have anything to say about it?
I, I've got questions. Um, and Mike and I talked about this earlier today. I noticed there's a very wide disparity in the levels of payout. Can someone explain to me why on that one?
I will try. So um, but it was seventeen years ago tonight, the town council approved a rewrite of the town code for the town's personnel policy. Uh, the policies came from a, a deriv, derived from the town's policy at the time, with the city and the county's policy. That was a three-one-three that we used, and we came together with a, and all we thought was a good policy, so uh, but the thing was unusual for the supervisors. At the time, they felt like the payout that the county had was endless, and we felt like that there should be uh some limits to that at the time, and it was a year and a half. We felt like it said, just a year, whatever time you have was going to be a year and a half, so one point five was the factor. Now, the, what I can find in the documentation from two thousand and four and five, thanks to the administrative assistant, is that we had taken, the town had taken all the previous definitions and benefit accrual that we had the name before, the PTO. We took what we had at the time in consideration of changing the PTO. Other words, vacation days, birthdays, personal business day, uh and at the time, holidays, floating holidays for firefighters, because back then firefighters who were scheduled to work a holiday were not allowed to take off work. So that was the idea. They did the conversion to the hours work. I'm going to share the screen for just a minute and show you uh what's in our personnel policy, if you see if it works here. All right, I can't see it, so you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay, so for the forty-hour uh and appendix A forty-hour worker, what we did, we took the maximum of two hundred and twenty-four hours and multiplied it by a year and a half. That came up to three hundred and thirty-six hours. Appendix B was the twenty-four, forty-eight employees, or basically the firefighters. You take their maximum amount of hours, which is four hundred and eighty hours, take it by a year and a half, it comes up to seven hundred and twenty hours. Appendix C was the six-and-three schedule for the police officers, and their hours was three hundred and ninety-six that they accrued. Uh, and we did it by a year and a half, it came up to five hundred and ninety-four hours. This is what's in our policy now, and that's what, how it was reflected in the uh, the PTO payout upon termination for the town. That's how we come up with it.
And one of the reasons that the uh police and fire have more hours is like Mike said, they don't get to take off the holidays. So we took the holiday hours and added those in to those two PTO. So theirs is, seems bigger than the forty-hour week, because the forty-hour people take the holidays as they occur.
Well, go ahead.
Uh, the other one is, there was, at the best of my recollection, there was an issue with the police department that because of their six-and-three, they worked uh so many Saturdays and Sundays. That's why their threshold was a little higher, because the hours worked, as far as a given year, they work less hours. There were two thousand and five hours a year, where a uh forty-hour employee works uh two thousand and eighty, but since they had to work quite a few Saturdays and Sundays, they got more in their uh benefit time accrual. The best of my recollection.
Well, I, I get the benefit time accrual, and I, I'll be honest, guys, I've got no issues there at all, however it was figured out. What I have an issue with is the payout, uh because we're talking about over ten years, so if somebody again, take one of the, I'm sorry, you just lost me, but the, the hours that only come up to three ninety-six, the people working eight hours. If they decide they're not going to take days off for ten years, and they can reach a certain cap level, so be it. That's on them. They earn those days. I, I get why we pay out at a certain level for the twenty-four hours and for the, or I'm sorry, when we recruit at a certain level for the twenty-four hours, where we recruit a certain level for the six-and-three, eight-and-a-half hours, and accrue at a certain level for the eight hours. What I don't get is why the difference in the payouts or the capability of payout, because we're paying by the hour as they leave. And again, if you looked at all these as individual hours that these people recruit over time, it's their choice to use them or not use them as time goes on. So I don't understand why, at that ten-year mark, if the eight-hour employee has banked, say, four hundred hours, and the eight-and-a-half hour has backed, banked four hundred hours, and the twenty-four hour has banked four hundred hours, why they all don't get paid out the exact same for those hours?
Well, we can only bank um a half, I, I believe you can carry over a half a year of PTO. If you don't take it in the current year, you can carry half of it over to the next year. So that's um in, in another spot in the policy.
Okay, and was that not half year then get you into that same level as the, you know, the bottom end at the eight hour and the top end at twenty-four? So if you create a half year over.
Uh, it is confusing, and I think that the uh fact that the holidays are added in with the PTO um kind of skews the, the figure.
I, I, I get that, Sandy, I do, but in this regard, I'm not arguing how it's accrued. I'm arguing over what the maximum level of payout is. Why would we not allow the eight-hour employee to have as much PTO banked and pay that out as the twenty-four-hour employee? I don't see why that skewed so horribly, because now we're talking about what each hour costs us, not how they got accrued. If I'm making any sense at all here. Because as it stands right now, the twenty-four-hour employee can bank up and essentially get a much bigger pay down at the end than what the eight-hour employee can.
But I, I think the way I understand it, the eight-hour employee is getting the holiday paid, whereas the firemen and the policemen are not. So that's why the difference is, correct?
Well, no, but that's not what I'm arguing. You guys are arguing how it's accrued. I'm arguing the caps on, why would we not allow that eight-hour employee to have the exact same number accrued and banked and pay it out at the exact same level as the twenty-four-hour employee?
Because of the Fairly Ver standards, they're just, their time sheets are figured so differently um that, I mean, a fireman works two thousand nine hundred and four hours a year.
Okay.
So he works.
Let me interrupt you. We're back to, we're back to arguing about how it's accrued. I'm arguing about how it's paid out. If, if.
I don't understand the difference, because you, it's what you earn.
No, it's what you have in the bank. If you go to, if, if I'm at the end of my ten years, and I've worked eight hours a day for my entire career, but I have four hundred hours banked, and if Mike is there, who works a twenty-four cycle, and he has four hundred banked, and we're going to pay out up to four hundred hours or whatever number we pick, why is it that I can't exchange my four hundred hours, because I've banked them and saved them, but Mike can't?
So Sandy, all, all he's saying is, the level of banking should be even across the board. Um, how it gets to that point, obviously, is different because of the different kinds of shifts and hours we work, but the level, after ten years, everybody should be able to have that same, same level as they go out the door. Um, they all ought to have the ability, it sounds like to me, what Scott's saying is to enjoy that same amount on the way out, not, not be guaranteed it, because some people will save or use everything differently, but with the level, the, the max level ought to be the same, not guarantee that it's going to be that much, but is that what you're saying, Scott?
Just said better.
It's up to the employee to save their PTO in order to even get this one-and-a-half-year payout. They may choose not to do that. They may use up all their PTO, and then they would only get the current year's payout. And it, it's even outlined in the policy that if you retire or leave before June thirtieth, then the first six months are um what's the term?
Prorated.
Prorated. You don't get the full benefit until you work to July first. This is the formula that's been laid out. If you're questioning it, I think we need some time to think about your, your question and understand it a little better. Um, I mean, obviously, the, the hours are so different that.
But, okay, but again, I'm not arguing how it gets accrued.
I understand what you're saying.
How much they can be paid out for.
I understand. If you, are you, would you prefer a flat formula that everybody's paid out four hundred hours?
Well, I, I just picked four hundred hours at random, Sandy. I don't, I don't care what the number is. Just if a certain person wants to bank up all that time and not use it, so be it. We'll pay out X, uh, I'm sorry, we will pay out up to X amount of hours, whatever whatever we choose that number to be, I don't care, but I just don't see where it shouldn't be equitable across the board as to how many hours they can be paid for at separation.
I think we look at a flat cap for everybody like Scott's saying, all across the board. That'd be worth a study, don't you think, Scott?
It's a conversation.
Right.
Yes.
No, I agree.
Mike Cornman has a remark.
Um, there are communities across our state that do just this, who have police and fire departments and other agencies that are non-traditional forty-hour work week, but have similar things. I moonlight on private with a private business, and they have twenty-four hour shifts, twelve-hour shifts, the same time. We still only have a maximum we can use as for everybody, no matter what it is. We took a lot of this from the uh county's personnel policy of two thousand and three, which covered everybody at the time, including the sheriff's deputies. So there was no difference. This is something we came up with years ago, and the culture at the time was, this was the way to do it. I'm welcoming the uh, uh difference uh of, of opinion or the different styles that we have today. We have to update and be competitive across the board, which I think is where the council wants us to review, and uh willing to look into that and does, see, see about making something more equitable.
I agree.
Mike, my argument is not how it's accrued at all. My argument is not for public safety, against public safety, for the civilian workforce, against the civilian workforce. My argument is the equitability of, if you want to bank it, that's fine. You didn't get to take the day off so that the town enjoyed your services on those days. It's much the same thing as I've had the same argument about the sick time. There are people who have hundreds or hundreds of hours at the time of their separation, and there's people who've got tens of hours of their separation. At some point, we paid out money for that. Every minute is dollars. Every hour is dollars. So we either used it earlier, or we pay it out now. Same thing here. You know, you're, you, everybody makes the thing of how it's accrued. It's not, to me, how it's accrued. It's meant to me, if you want to save it and get to that level and get the payout, the payout should be the same across the board, albeit within your wage structure.
It will take some restructuring in several areas of the policy too, because, just to get it all in sync.
After twenty years, wouldn't you think we'd want to look at that policy and maybe put it in sync?
I think it's a good time to review the policy for sure.
Yeah.
Let's table it and come back at it again next meeting.
Might take a little bit more research.
Please, can you consider this, at least this part for tonight? Because there are some people going to be retiring soon, very soon, that says would affect if we delay, it may make a difference to what's going on. Now, I think we're going to get this done in the next forty-five days? That's a question for everybody. If so, then we table it, and I don't know if we can get this together for a first reading, because this would be a rewrite. This would not be, there would probably be at least five different sections of the personnel policy that this affects, so it wouldn't be just as simple as, you know, doing it this way. So I just want to throw it out there at you, so. doing it this way. So I just want to throw it out there at you. So I'm not in disagreement that we need to look at this and come up with a better plan.
Is anybody retiring in the next two weeks?
No.
Then it's something that.
Bear in mind that this ordinance just changes a few little words. It just takes out, is vested in the town's retirement plan and inserts has completed ten years of continuous employment. So I would request that we go ahead and pass this and then relook at the situation you're talking about. And like Mike said, it's going to affect several areas.
But, but no one's retiring in the next two weeks.
Not to my knowledge.
But my question is too then, what, what difference does it make? Say we, we pass this tonight compared to the old policy. I thought it was just verbiage. I didn't think it really made a difference in anything.
It doesn't. I mean, it just changes that verbiage.
So then I don't see what the urgency is then. I'm sorry, I just.
I do have two firefighters have applied to other, two full-time firefighters have applied to other jobs, other positions, so maybe, but we're talking minor amount of money that they would probably get paid out. So I just, it just reminded me of that. So I'm okay with it.
Because of the payout, I mean, because of the, the time on, Mike, or why, why would the wording change it?
Well, if we prove it tonight, they will not get any payout. If they prove it, if we leave it like it is now, they could get what PTO they have banked up already. This is not much because there are two of them are newer employees, but they do have some and that wasn't the intent, so.
I'm okay either way. However, you guys want to do it. We definitely need to look at the policy, but Mike, if you think it has to be passed tonight, this part of it, I don't see, if it's just verbiage, I really don't see the difference, but if we need to pass it, let's pass it tonight. We'll work on the other.
I'm okay either way as well.
Scott?
I'm trying to wrap my head around it because I don't want to go down that road. I'm I just don't see the urgency, but potentially there is, I guess.
And I mean, we're not changing anything that you are talking about right now. So it would take a whole different ordinance to go to start restructuring everything. This is just a simple phrase change.
I get that, but I guess my retort to that is that simple change has been, has been sorry, the original language has been there for, what'd you say, Mike, since oh-three, oh-four, somewhere in that neighborhood? I, I think, at least from my perspective, and I don't know about the rest of the council, I think there's a sense from the council, again, from my end at least, that since this policy's not been brought to our attention, but since Julie, it's time to, to line this out a little bit better, make it more equitable. I don't see how a wording change needs to be rushed if the council's feeling as a whole is we need to look at the entire policy. That's just my two cents on it.
I agree with that. I truly agree with that because if we're going to be readdressing it later, why pass something tonight just to address over in two to four weeks or whenever we do it?
Maybe we should just table it tonight to give maybe a couple of weeks to get with Mike Corman and Mike Farmer's thought, you know, maybe just everybody talk about it or to maybe get some language going to bring it to us maybe the next time. What do you think, Scott?
Again, if there's an urgency to it, of course, let's talk about it, but frankly, this is part of the policy that while I'm sure I read at some point in the fifteen years I've been here, ten years I've been here, whatever it is, I wasn't quite frankly sharply in a focus, but when I sent and read through the packet, it just, the equitability of it made it really stick out in my mind and I, I guess I'm hesitant to do anything with it until we can sort that out.
So Mike Corman, would that be okay with you if maybe we get to the next meeting that give you time that maybe talk with Mike Farmer and if Scott has ideas or something and get something maybe rolled up or something?
I'm not sure of the two weeks, but it, sort of order, we can have something, yes.
What's your thoughts, Trevor?
I think as I sit here, I mean, I'd like to see everybody, I'd like to see more of a flat cap study done and I don't, I mean, if there's nobody retiring within the next two weeks, I don't see the rush to get this passed tonight. Clean it up a little bit over these next two weeks and bring it back to the table.
And I have to say, I never dreamed that making this minor change would create so much discussion and it's good thoughts. It's, I agree that it's something that it needs to be looked at. I'm just amazed the conversation this created.
Well, that, that brings up a very good point, Sandy, that, that potentially, and no, this is not going to be popular at all, but potentially at some point in this town, we need to have people reviewing policies on a fairly regular basis. So and again, Mike, don't take this the wrong way. So we don't have one set twenty years that all of a sudden pokes out from under a rock that's very little used and we decide, yeah, that's probably not how we should have been doing it for a number of years.
Well, and I would like to request that we have a outside company that specializes in personnel policies. This is not to review the time that, what, you would make that decision, but just our personnel policy overall. It is very hard to find information in our policy. Employees call me quite often and ask questions and, and I sometimes struggle too, to, it's just not laid out very well and it could be easier to follow. So I would love to get a few quotes on having that personnel policy reviewed by someone who specializes in that field.
Sandy, didn't we attempt that several years ago to get someone in here to look at that?
We did and it created quite a hubbub. So yes. It's been a while though. That's probably over ten years ago.
Yeah, I remember. It's, it's been a long time, but I do remember we, we initiated this and I really not sure what happened, but Scott, I think you were on the board too.
Yeah, but you're right. I don't remember what happened either, but I, I kind of echo Sandy's call. It's probably time because frankly, no offense to anybody on the council now or supervision or earlier, it's kind of like a house that was put together by about nine different carpenters and no one really paid attention to what anybody else was doing.
I agree and it's also different cooks in the kitchen. I mean, the council changes every four years. People make different policies, supervisors change. So yeah, it's, it's piecemeal together and that's what we have when that happens.
Can someone fill me in on what the controversy was by having this done?
Don't remember, honestly.
It was a little bit of a misunderstanding. I had, I was at a conference and they were drawing names as they often do, giving things away, you know, little phrases. One of them was a personnel policy review. And there was a couple of things that they pointed out about our policy. And I sent the email to Darla so that she would just be aware of what they were suggesting. But there was a price contained in that and I mean, a particular supervisor that is no longer here got very upset about it and it, I mean, it never went before council, I don't think.
Yeah, I remember that now. And it was, it, it, their feelings were hurt because they had done a lot of work on the policy. What was that?
I don't know.
Well, I, like I said, Pam, I say we just table it and come back at this and have Darla, Sandy, Mike, whoever else needs to work on all this, get, get with them and bring it back to us. And I'm all for an outside agency too. I mean, I think that's our best bet because of what Scott said earlier. You know, council changes every four years, supervisors come and go and it's just been piecemealed together forever. So without hurting anyone's feelings, I think it's a good idea of just to have it sent out and have someone professionally look at it.
That's something you'd like to see done, Scott?
I think it's something we need to see done, yes, because I think we need to look at this overall. So are you ready for a motion on the other? Or do you want to discuss anymore?
Is everybody have anything else to say? If not, I guess, Scott, we can just do a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion. We table this until at least the next meeting, if not longer. We'll let Mike determine when it comes back to us.
I'll second.
Okay, Sandy, whenever you're ready.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. The next we have an ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh-two to amend chapter fifty-two of the Elsfield Town Code to increase the sewer hook-on fee. Have anything from the public? Council, you have any one last thing to say?
I have one quick question. Mike, are Eastern Richland, are they doing the same thing or have you heard anything? You're muted, Mike.
When we negotiated that new contract we have with them, we did agree both that that's probably where we ought to be with our hook-ons. They have a different process and so I believe Darla's notified them that we're going to do this and so I'm pretty sure they're okay with it. And I don't know why they wouldn't be. And I'd remind everybody, this has to do with new starts, new customers that are hooking on. It has nothing to do with our existing customer base except to protect, protect them from inflationary costs as we move forward that might relate to building or rehab no wastewater plant.
And I would like to add too, that I believe there was some discussion during the last meeting about paragraph E coming out, which refers to the wholesale users paying twenty-five hundred dollars. And if the council's inclined to do that, then new paragraph or paragraph F will then become paragraph E.
And I highly recommend that, that it comes out.
Hey, so what's up? You want to say something, Dan?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
If I have a question, if the paragraph comes out, the wholesale people will still pay the twenty-five hundred dollars, correct?
They will not.
They won't.
They would only pay, they have their own structure for accepting hook-on fees and we've never, not in the twenty-two years I've been here, have asked for them to pay us money when they get a hook-on fee. And I believe we discussed that during the negotiations. And Jeff, you can help me out, but we agreed that that was, I, I think it, it, it was at one time made back in the eighties or nineties when that was true, but that's never been in effect since I've been here.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
They get their own hook-on fees and they charge what they charge and we charge what we charge, so.
Okay.
At what paragraph was that?
It's paragraph E that begins, "All customers of the wholesale user shall pay an availability fee" as, as part of this ordinance revision, that paragraph will come out if the council approves that, that revision. Otherwise, then the rest of the, the changes are going to just raise the fees, the hook-on fees from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Are we ready for a motion?
Whenever you guys are. Motion second.
I made a motion. We approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-two to amend chapter fifty-two of the Elsfield Town Code to increase this sewer hook-on fees and delete paragraph E.
So you're, you're making a motion to approve the ordinance then as amended?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
With deleting paragraph E, correct?
Yes, in addition to the other changes that are noted in boldface type. Thank you. Yes.
I'll second.
Whenever you're ready, Sandy.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next we have no old business. And we have the flood report. Mike, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Next we have additional Elsfield update. Dan, do you have anything?
Yes, all I've got is we are having a steering committee meeting tomorrow at the town hall at eleven o'clock with the Taylor Group for the Envision Elsfield project. And they are going to roll out the final completed Envision Elsfield document, if you will. So we're anxious to see that. I'd like to invite anybody that would like to come, especially the town board or anybody, anybody wants to come to come to the meeting at eleven o'clock tomorrow, town hall with Taylor Group. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have new business. First is video system upgrades for the police department.
Yes, Mr. President, this is Chief Dernell. We're going to postpone that presentation till the first meeting in March and we should be ready at that time and I'll have some more information out to you all about the purchases we're requesting to make there. I want to apologize too, I couldn't get my desktop to work just trying to get on just at the early part of the meeting, so I had to go out to get my, my computer out of the car, so.
So Darla, do we need to table this or?
I think it would be helpful, yes, since it's on the agenda.
Okay. Have a motion in a second.
I move, we table the video system upgrade for the police department.
Second.
Hey Sandy, whenever you're ready.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
No, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Baker Kelly Municipal's Advisors LLC for the Financial Plan, Capital Plan, Park Impact Fees and Business Personal Property Impact Analysis.
I'll take this one. I'll take this one. I think I would like to recommend that we table this as well. We're getting ready to talk about financial topics related to Elsfield, the town Elsfield. And so I don't think we need to be in a hurry to get this approved. And I think it'll be helpful to hear comments from the board as well as some of the department heads. And so it'll be discussed in a work session after this board meeting. So I like to recommend we table this.
Okay. Do you have a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table. Second.
Hey Sandy, whenever you're ready.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries. Just in case you're wondering why I don't call the president's name first, that's at her request.
Okay, now moving on to privilege of the floor. You have anything that you want to discuss, something that we haven't already discussed tonight?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to compliment all of you on the way you've conducted yourselves.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to compliment all of you on the way you've conducted yourselves tonight. And the way you see, uh, try to see the future of our town. We're all aware that we are no longer a small community. We are an urban center. And as such, more things outside our control have a very strong impact on how our town's future will lay out. I would like to thank, uh, Dan and the group for their vision. I would hope to make the meeting tomorrow. But in the event I don't, uh, I wish you well and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay, we're going to supervisor comments. Jimmy, do you have?
I'm good, thank you.
Mike Corman?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Kip?
I have nothing, thank you.
And Mike Farmer, you want to say anything?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Next we have council comments. Does anybody from the council have anything to talk about? Okay.
Pam, Pam?
Yeah.
We might want, we might want to talk about, um, our plans for March as far as in, in-house meetings. I'm, uh, assuming everything goes as planned. I, I assume we're going to go back to live meetings on March fourteenth. Anybody have any comment on that?
William, you have anything to say about it?
I'd prefer if we go to in-person meeting, but I think from the rest of the council, it's going to depend on what, uh, the governor's emergency. Orders are Friday, Friday. But I've been for in-person.
And with that said, that, that, that's what I meant. I mean, assuming that they, um, ratchet back. All the mandates that our next meeting, March fourteenth, looks like, uh, we'll be clear of all that. And so with that thought, and hopefully that happens, uh, I'd, I'd really like to consider a live meeting. From now until ever.
I don't know that we're going to have a choice. Because if the governor rolls back the emergency orders, we cannot meet virtually. We would have to meet in person. So I guess I would advocate that we simply wait for what the governor's orders may or may not be and then Pam, as president, can choose. Whatever she prefers under law, if the law still exists that allows us to meet virtually, or she'd prefer to meet in person.
And that's. On, on top of that, Darla, um, if we go back to regular meetings, are we still going to be able to do the hybrid or will that change too?
No, you can do the hybrid.
Okay, good. Cause I think that's good if someone's out of town and wants to call in on something or whatever, so.
But Darla, in that word that falls, we can only do it so many times a year.
Correct. And you still have to have a quorum present in person at the, um, town hall. For the meeting.
Okay.
The public can still zoom in, correct?
Yes. I, I don't have your rules in front of me or the policy that you enacted, but I believe that was correct, yes.
Okay.
We might want to look at the policy, honestly, guys, because I don't remember whether we decided that, because there was discussion where the policy says that we can. Accept public comment from Zoom or no. And I don't.
I thought we tabled that because we wanted to see if it was feasible technological wise.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We probably should iron that out the next meeting before we start going down that road.
Agreed, because when I tried to do the work session, we really didn't have that ironed out working very well.
Right.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we are going to, in the meeting, and take a five-minute break for anybody who wants to stretch their leg for a minute or grab a drink or whatever. And then we'll resume to the work session and we're going to set a limit of ninety minutes. So that we, go ahead.
Do you want a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
It's a motion.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carry, meeting adjourned at seven twenty-five.